You're fallen in heaven. We are so grateful to be here at the council table with those fine people and grateful to be able to serve together and to be able to take care of the town matters. We pray for their wisdom to be there with us on this day as we discuss important capital matters and be able to make sense of all that will be presented to us. And we pray for all those who are unwell and wish them well. And we say the same humbly in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, so today is the 25th of February. It's 5 o'clock. And we want to thank the
media, Corey McCarthy for Channel 32. Thank you for being here. We have a delegation. We have Barton Atwood there. So we're happy to have you in a second once we approve the agenda. So we call the meeting to order. And are there any other additions to the agenda that need to be considered? You have a revised agenda from the first copy that was given to you?
Yeah, I added the Joseph Scott delegation later on.
Okay, so you have that and you have the CEO report that has been added also.
Ryan doesn't show it, but I'm okay with that.
You don't have it showing up? Maybe you want to kind of refresh your agenda. All right, so those are not additions. This is a regular, the regular agenda. I just wanted to make sure that you had it.
Under confidential, we're going to talk a little bit about Volkhorst.
The...
Okay, good. All right, I'm good. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. All right, we have a delegation. Mr. Atwood, a Director of Infrastructure Services, is going to talk to us regarding lead in water or lead pipes issues. Thank you. And then new legislation.
I'm happy to be here with you today. Last year, I guess this all developed, what brought it to attention is the incident in Flint, Michigan.
Yeah.
Brought a lot of attention to lead in the water. What caused the lead in that water is that they switched their source water and the Flint River was a little more corrosive and it caused corrosion in the pipes and lead leached into their water quite significantly, causing a lot of problems. So with that, Canada has changed their, what is called their MAC or their maximum acceptable concentration level, which has been reduced by half. It used to be 10 micrograms per litre, now it's 5 micrograms per litre. So with that, they also have changed the point of where we have to test that and where we have to ensure that levels are below that point. And that is at the resident tap, not just in our water mains, but at the tap. So we have to ensure that the health and safety of the citizens are being adhered to. So with that, we have to determine a few things which we, which you want to decide to do with going about our lead, getting the lead out program is what they call it. So we need to monitor the lead levels in town. We need to investigate and find out how many lead surfaces that we might have. And there's also, that is the first phase of it. The second phase is once we find the levels of lead in homes and residences, then we have to start instigating Phase Two, which is point-of-use filters and education, helping the citizens realize what they can do to keep lead out of their lines. And also the replacement of some plumbing in homes, not just old homes, but newer homes will have lead in them as well because of the lead solder that used to be years ago. The solder and copper pipes used to have lead in them. So, and also there's a lot of taps and such plumbing that have lead in them. And I think maybe some of our older meters might have lead in them as well. And so there's a lot of areas that we have to check. And I'll be quite curious to see what level of lead that we have.
Bart, can I ask you a question then?
Yes.
Since you're talking about the need of testing in that first phase, can you give me a sense then, what kind of testing you intend to do? Is it a random testing? Or is that everybody will be tested? Is there a chance for people to see if they have lead in their water, if you only do pocket testing?
The intent is that, is that we test every house.
Okay.
That's the intent. But we have to start, we have to start at a minimum level. Right now, for our population, we have to test 40 homes by the end of 2021.
Okay.
So 20 this year and 20 next year. And we, we hope that we can find in the program, we might even be able to get volunteers that will sample their own homes and send the test, or the water in, water sample into us and we can send it in for testing.
Okay.
So we will put that in an information packet.
Okay.
So that if somebody wants to sample their homes themselves, they can do that.
Okay, is there a cost that will be attached to it?
Yeah, the cost for the test, each test is $25.
$10.
Plus shipping.
Okay.
We have to ship it to the lab.
Bart, is there any way that you can buy a lab equipment enough to test for lead ourselves?
Um, we have looked into that. It's, it's quite costly to certify as a lab to be able to, we're certified to do certain tests that we're already doing. But for lead testing, it's, we looked into the instrument, it's quite costly.
Okay.
For $25 a sample, it's not out of the question. We're still looking into it. It's new. And there's not a lot of product out there.
So second to that, with the $25, and we've got how many houses, 1,300 properties?
Yeah.
About 1,300. What's your timeframe for finalization?
Four years.
Four years?
So we have a, we...
Going to do 40 by 2021?
Yeah, and we've got, and then we have to do increasingly more. So we're hoping to have a lot of volunteers to help do their own sampling.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So in Phase Two, what I wrote this letter for specifically is that as a, as a council, you need to decide how we're gonna...
Mitigation.
Well, help with the mitigation, but also, or what do they call it, to incent, incentivizing our water users. Now, there's been, for example, Epcore and Edmonton, they have increased their utility rates to cover replacing lead lines. That's what they chose to do. Calgary is replacing all the lead lines that they find to property and then encouraging the owner to replace the rest of it to the house. There's other utilities that are replacing the whole line from the water main to the house and then given a time period for the owner to pay for that. Over four or five years, I'm not sure which, whichever may be appropriate for that. So that's one decision that needs to be made. How do we want to fund this?
Question?
Yeah, what spurred this?
Michigan.
Initiated this problem? I mean, have we had an issue with it?
In Cardston, no. As you can see in your, in your handout, the, the levels of lead coming from the water plant and in our distribution is very minute.
Is one tenth of what five micro...
How do we get an exemption then? Can't you send some of that information off?
We have to do the Phase One testing.
Uh huh.
If we find that we are over the maximum allowable concentration.
Yeah.
Then we have to mitigate it.
But if we don't?
But if we don't find lead lines, we don't find that we're over, then we're...
Yeah.
There's nothing.
But you're going to do a random sampling on the 40?
The sampling will be done by, we will take a percentage of older homes that are older than 1960. Those homes are specifically, could have lead lines going to them. I've, I've only found about three lines in the years I've worked for the town. We've replaced three lead lines, three or four.
Yeah.
So I don't perceive that we will find many.
Should we let him finish and then ask questions?
You wanted to ask?
Should we let him finish and then ask questions?
Go ahead.
I just have a couple of things, other areas to help with. If we do find lead content above the MAC, then we can help pay for the cost of the point-of-use filter. And that cost can range anywhere from $50 to $200. Most utilities are given a subsidy of up to $100 to help with that filter. And that's Epcore, Calgary, most utilities I've looked into are just given that subsidy of $100. And then if we do find a significant problem with lead throughout our system, then there's a treatment at the water plant that we can add a chemical that will eliminate lead from leaching into the water. It just coats the metal pipes and protects it from corrosion, from oxidation. That's another option if we do find that we are over that limit in a significant amount of areas. Edmonton found that their levels were fairly high in the older area, but also in the new area. And they found quite a few areas that were high. And so they started treatment in their plants of the orthophosphate. And that just helped eliminate that lead.
Good.
There is also a rumor, they, they gave us a rumor at Edmonton when we're up in the, Dord Edmonton, they call it, just to give us information about upcoming regulations and such. And there's a possible government grant funding that may come available in 2024 for the replacement of lead service lines. So that might be coming, we're not sure.
Okay, so are you done with your presentation?
Yep.
Bart, okay. So councillor Brown, councillor Coates, councillor Drew.
Okay, so I guess my question is, if in fact there is this orthophosphate that we can put in the lines to then stop us from having lead in our lines, why wouldn't we do that? Like...
Just...
Go ahead.
Is it expensive? Is it?
I haven't really looked into the expense of it yet.
Because I...
But it would be a pump and the chemical. That's all it would be.
Because I'm just thinking, if in fact we found out that, if we tested and found out that Cardston has higher, you know, in some areas or something, wouldn't it just be cheaper rather than ripping out all of the lines and all the infrastructure? Wouldn't it just be cheaper to go ahead and put that in the water?
Yeah, they don't want you to say that's an alternative to taking out lead lines.
I see.
Lead lines need to come out.
Okay, okay.
And for us to do that, the cost isn't extreme.
Okay.
We can replace a lead line for approximately $5,000 per household. I mean, that's what we charge.
I see. And then part B to that question would be, so as you said, so a homeowner, if in fact I have my, I send my water in, it's high in lead, and I get the letter back saying it is, the town will replace their line to my house for the $5,000, the town will pay for that. And then it's up to me, the homeowner, to replace my lead lines that would be in my house? Is that right?
Well, it's, it depends on what you want to do with, with the lead lines. If we find lead line to a house from the water main to the property, are we going to charge the homeowner to pay from property to the house?
Right.
Or are we going to do the whole thing? And then, or are we going to have them, give them a pay period of five years to pay for it? That's a decision that needs to be made.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Coates, go ahead.
Is there a question on RO systems? Does lead, does that clear out, does lead as well?
Yes.
It does? Okay, good. I have an RO system.
Councillor Drew, councillor Bangray.
Yeah, I think my questions were answered, so that's good.
Yeah, councillor Bangray.
Bart, we've got 1,300 homes. At $25 a test is $32,500.
Yeah.
Okay, that's just the testing alone. How long is it going to take per unit to go into a house with, for labor rates?
A test, sampling would take a half an hour.
So the cost is going to be quite significant just for the testing?
Yes.
Bart, then let me ask you this question. You were saying that you're going to send information to the homeowners somehow through the utility bill or something like that, I would imagine. So is one of the options for the homeowner to volunteer for testing at their own cost?
That would be a possibility, yes.
Okay, so that, is that something that will be inside that communication piece?
Well, before I put out a communication to all the residents, I need to know what the town is going to cover, how we're going to charge if we find a lead line, how we're going to charge for replacing that lead line.
So you almost want the Part Two to be answered before we can even go to the Part One?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. I need to give that information out to the residents so they know what to expect if they find lead in their lines.
Yeah, I, I wanted to know which way you wanted us to kind of approach that. Okay, so that's clear in my mind. Councillor Bangray.
Bart, is there, is there a year of the testing of the homes? Like, any home built after 1985 or something like that uses plastic, you know, lines? If the owner walks in there and says, hey, I've got all plastic in my line, in my house, but I don't know what my service is from the, from the shut-off to my property line, are they void of that test for the house?
I wouldn't say they're void, but I wouldn't be as worried about theirs. There are...
See, my home is all copper.
Yeah, some plastic lines still have the copper joints or the couplers.
Yeah.
And they could have had lead in them. Some of them had lead in them.
Yeah, it's a joint.
Yeah.
So if you have an RO system, would you still test that house?
No, we won't test the, we won't test if the RO system is where the water comes into the house and it goes through an RO system, we won't test it. Because the RO system will take out lead.
All right, so any more questions? All right, so Bart, thank you so much for that information piece. Maybe one more question from councillor Brown?
Sorry. What would be your personal, you've got lots of, you've got way more experience in this than most of the people sitting at this table, especially me. What would, what do you think is fair? What, after going to these meetings and talking to the communities and talking to the other people that are having to do the same thing, what do you think is reasonable?
What I would, what I would suggest myself is, I think a point-of-use filter for interim time until the lead can be mitigated, I think a $100 rebate would be reasonable. I, and also I feel that we, we've already been replacing lead lines from the main to the property on town cost. That's our, our line. But if you give a homeowner a time period to pay for the other would be generous.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Barnes?
Okay, so, this is in the back of my mind, if, if you do this random testing and find out that we don't have an issue, like in your report, so far we don't have an issue. Where our levels are below what the half is come to.
Yeah.
We're below that five.
Ten times below.
So if we're there, why do we have to do anything?
Mandated by regulations. It's...
Regardless if we're under the thing?
We have to do initial testing.
Well, no, I'm not worried about the testing. But why would we need to go and, and change everybody's lines if, if we don't have a problem?
Well, if we find a lead line, that's mandated that we have to change.
I understand that. But those who don't have lead lines, you're not expecting them to go and spend a bunch of money.
No, we don't.
So we're really not looking at 1,300 homes. We're looking at those who have the problem.
Yeah, if we, well, if we, the testing will continue, there's going to be a continuous testing even after 2024.
Yeah.
They want a lead testing program. If we find that we're, our levels are low enough, then that testing will go back to a minimum.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. They, they really don't know yet until they see how the conditions are throughout, throughout Alberta.
Comes back to my initial question. Has there been a big issue? Has there been people that have been getting sick from lead poisoning? Or is this an overreaction by somebody that's looking for a job to do something with their job?
They have found that the ones who are susceptible to lead...
I'm sorry, that's a violent question.
Are, are women who are pregnant.
Yeah.
Or who are breastfeeding, or young children. Because they absorb the lead.
More.
And it causes psychological problems and, and brain development problems. That's what they found with lead.
Okay, so that's where the issue is.
So if, if we're looking at testing a home, if, if there's a home with young children, we'll go there first.
Yeah.
Bart, I have one question. And just curiosity, because I have not lived in this community long enough to know. For the older homes, where, where was the community, was the town involved in putting the pipes right from the main?
Yes.
Right up to the house?
Yeah.
Then doesn't it behoove the town to look after the cost of that, that puts it in at the first place?
With an old lead line, the town would have put it in.
Right. So that is a question I had in my mind. Who put those lines in? Yeah.
Yeah, even, I built my home in 89, and the town put the water line right to my house.
Right. So in that case, there is another philosophical question. Whose responsibility is it?
And that's, and that's a decision we make. If we feel that we're going to replace the line right to the house.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Then that's what we do.
I mean, we, we're always looking for saving, but sometimes it's not the right place. Yeah.
One more question, Bart. I've got a home that's 100 and some years old. My water line, my driveway is right over top of it. Comes up the, up through the driveway, up to the side of my house.
Mm-hmm.
How are you going to replace that line?
Well, there's some tricks to that.
Are you going to, are you going to shoot it through?
We would, we would try the option of pulling a new line in. So you dig a hole at the house and dig one in the street, and then fish, fish tape through it and pull a cable through and pull the new line in.
All right. Well, I think you gave us quite a bit of information. Now we need to digest that and try to make some decisions.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bart.
All right.
Thanks, Bart.
Okay, so let's move on. We have the minutes of the February 11.
I'm going to phone in here for the next one, so go ahead and...
Okay, so the regular meeting?
We've got a couple things.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So we have minutes of February 11. There were a couple typos that got fixed. Any questions regarding those minutes? I read them. I find them reflective of what we discussed.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the council meeting of February 11, 2020.
All right. Questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. So the next one is the Bylaw 1673A under Bylaw and Policy, and it's a cannabis control by law amendment. We did first reading. And really, as you could see, the only changes that was done to that policy was to put a definition of what consumption meant. And it's more encompassing. So we now need to have a second and third reading if you're ready to do so.
I'll move that we have second reading on Bylaw 1673A.
All right.
It's controlled by law.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
It's a small one.
Go ahead, councillor.
A number of companies now are, are pushing, I guess it's cannabis without the THC. We're not concerned about that.
Well, that's...
Some of it would be medical marijuana, some of it would just be companies that, it's legal, they can, it's not, there's no THC in it.
Okay, that's one for Jeff.
I don't know if I know the exact answer to that, but I think the intent of this is the public consumption of it.
Yeah.
Right? Because Alberta Health's concern was the normalizing of consumption. So it's, again, not prohibiting any use even, well, there's very few illicit uses anymore, frankly. But it's, it's not prohibiting the use, it's the public consumption of such.
So most likely people that are taking it for medicinal purposes won't be taking it on Main Street.
Right, right. They can, in their properties and homes, no problem.
Okay, good enough?
Yeah.
All right, so all in favor? Thank you. So that's second reading. We need to do third. Councillor Bangray or councillor Brown?
Go ahead, councillor.
I'm not so sure who was the first one there.
Go ahead.
Councillor Brown.
Perfect, it's me. So I make a motion to, for third reading of Bylaw 1673A Cannabis Control Bylaw Amendment.
Yeah. Good. We, we don't need to allow because we're doing second and third. All in favor? Thank you very much. This bylaw is now passed with this amendment. All right, so we're going to put councillor Silk on the speakerphone. And we're going to carry on with item seven on your agenda, which has to do with other business. One of the main thing being the proposed recreation facility. It's a presentation by the RECC Recreation Committee.
Hello?
Hey, you're live.
And thank you, thank you, Randy, for being there. Thank you councillor Silk, and I hope you're enjoying warm weather.
Wipe the sun down.
And councillor...
Indeed.
And councillor Brown, the three of you will be part of that presentation. Councillor Brown, when you need to stand up, please do so whenever it feels more comfortable.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. You ready councillor Silk?
Go ahead.
All right. Okay, so council asked councillor Silk and myself to come up with open house and come up with ideas for our open house. And they also wanted to know our information that with the town's help, Randy Russell and his people have piled together a whole bunch of information for us. And so you all wanted us to present that to you. So that's essentially what we're going to do now. So to start out with, as you all remember, you approved the money that was spent to hire Factor V. Factor V came in and they did this strategic action plan that you've all been given. It is the Let's Grow Cardston Action Plan. I hope you all have read it.
There is quite a few.
Anywho, so seems how you've read it, perfect. We're just going to jump right in and start talking about some of the things. First of all, we wanted to throw the dates out for our open house that have already been booked. I... we needed to make sure to try and hit everybody, as many people as possible in the fairest way possible. And so in doing that, we decided to meet with the seniors during the day so that the seniors don't have to come out during the night and slipping and falling, and seniors like things better in the afternoon. So councillor Silk and myself and Randy Russell will be going on March 16th to a seniors' luncheon, and we will be presenting they graciously where their entertainment, so to speak. So I'm sure councillor Silk will bring his A-game. So we will, on that day, we're going to go ahead and present all the information that you're getting today, and we'll have a Q and A because it's really important to hear seniors' opinions on this because they pay taxes in this town, and we want to make sure that we're hearing everybody's side of things. And when we talked to the president, Butch Beamer, of the seniors, he was thrilled that we were willing to do that. So then the next open house, which will be open for the public, will be on March 25th at 7 o'clock at the civic center here. And at that time, councillor Silk, myself, and Randy Russell will be here, and we will be giving our pitch. But more importantly, we want to hear from the public. We're going to show them the homework that we've done, and maybe we'll just dive in straight to the homework. So councillor Silk, myself, and a few people from the Parks and Rec ad hoc committee, we drove to, we drove out to Brooks to visit their rec center because we heard it was fantastic, and we wanted to get ideas, and we were all excited. So we drove out to Brooks, only to have our hopes crushed harshly because it was a fabulous facility, but not what we were thinking. But while we were there, the manager, I believe we were talking to, she suggested that more so what we were looking at was more in Duchess. And so that Duchess was like 5, 10 minutes away. And so we agreed, we were already out there, let's drive 5, 10 minutes and go to Duchess. So we called them, and they graciously said, come on down. We went there, we did a walkthrough of their facility, and they were awesome and let us ask questions. And they've also given us their blueprints, which y'all have. Those are the blueprints that are in front of you. So you've got the design of the building. Now, this building that they designed was $4.5 million, and they were able to fund it. Now, y'all have to realize that Duchess is not a huge community. It's a kissing sister, I would say, to Brooks. It's very close, but it is tiny, like village size. But they were lucky enough to have their curling rink burned down, and so they had some insurance money and were able to use that money along with some other money that they were given in grants and money from county. And, or actually, they weren't given money from the county, they were given the land. And so in all of those things, they were able to build this beautiful building. And so the building that y'all have in front of you is the building that is in Duchess. In this building, when we walked in, we realized that it was pretty dang close to what we're thinking we would like to have in Cardston. It has, the only thing it is missing is it does have an indoor track, but the indoor track is around the gymnasium. And so we just didn't feel like there was enough room. We felt that we would like to suspend ours so that we would have a walking track up top so that you could look down and see what was going on, and it didn't take up floor space because there's so much attic space because it's so large. Now, this building, we also visited the one in standoff, which is a sprung structure, which we love and we're so gracious that the Blood Tribe allowed us to come out there and visit that building. That building, of course, we would love to bring to Cardston, we're all over that. But there were concerns in regards to it looking not quite like we'd want it in Cardston. And it also had with wind and the few things we were concerned with. So we were trying to, the rec board had kind of steered us towards less using the sprung structure and more wood build. And so the one in Duchess is a wood build. And so the one in Duchess has a gym, has the track, has classrooms that can be used, has yoga studios, has weight room, has repelling, has all sorts of things that they have designed for their community. And they have a phenomenal manager that manages it, and she takes care of it, and she runs programs all summer long, through the winter. That building is hugely in use. And she, I mean, she is amazing, I must say. We were quite impressed with her. Randy, did you have anything to add to that when we looked at that building? No? Okay, jump in at any time. So in this building, so when we met with Factor V, when they were coming up with our strategic plan, they had the board members of the Parks and Rec ad hoc committee, they had us come up with questions that should be sent out to the community. And so questions were sent out to the community, and you have some of those questions in front of you, and they answered them. And then Factor V compiled all of that information, and they went ahead and came up with a game plan that they felt would fit our community. I'm going to be honest, I didn't love it, but their version was their version. And we felt like, and we were told, that in order to go ahead with the next step, we would need a strategic plan, which we have. We bought, paid for it. It does have some great ideas in which we can use, but there were areas of it that I wasn't in love with. Councillor Silk, did you want to add anything?
The only thing I wanted to add with the Duchess facility is, a lot of the cost of that are probably, a quarter of it was paving all the way around the complex. So the actual structure was not quite as expensive as, you know, what was indicated. It was one and a half million, but there was about a million of that that was for paving and all the landscaping that took place outside.
Do you know how old that structure, that facility is?
The one in Duchess? Councillor, wasn't it within five years? It wasn't very old, the one in Duchess? How old?
It's within four or five years old.
So the costs are still relevant?
Yes, that's what they figured. Yep, that's what they figured. Anything else councillor Silk?
No, not yet.
Okay. So, let's see. So Factor V went ahead, they came up with a game plan for us. They sent the questions out to the public, the public, all 10 of them, answered back and came up with a plan. And the plan was therefore presented, like I said. And so I sit on the Parks and Rec ad hoc, and I also sit on the Parks and Rec boards, and all of them said the next step, let's go ahead and do an open house. Let's find out if this community really is behind this. Because if they aren't behind us, we're done talking about it. We need to know. If this is the direction that the taxpayers of Cardston want us to go, then we seriously need to look at this. But if they're not willing to come to a meeting and ask questions and do their homework, then this isn't going to work because this is kind of a large project, and we definitely need all hands on deck for this. So if I can just, if you'll just go to the question page, so it says, I don't know how much time I have, mayor.
Councillor, as long as you want.
Okay, so we're done? No. So if you could just go to your open house question page. These are questions that Randy compiled of all of the questions that the board had, and we all came up with, and we tried to come up with answers of them. So if, so like the first question is, what would be the cost for our facility? We're roughly looking at about $5 million, and we feel like that is a reasonable cost. Like the mayor, like you said, it's been within five years, so we kind of felt like if we went a little bit higher, like councillor Silk said, they had paving, but you never know what can come up. So then the next question was, how do we fund that project? Well, that's a great idea. Councillor Silk has suggested buying lottery tickets, and we support him on that. But until that actually comes to pass, that is a huge ask. We know right now that the government is saying heck no to pretty much everything. So we are looking, we are looking at people that are willing to donate, we are looking at any possible grants that are in there as far as community grants, First Nations, if we can have help with that, handicap association, whatever. We made a huge list of all of the areas that could be hit in this community, and that's what we're thinking. And that's why I say we need everyone on board for this. So the next question is, how will this facility affect the citizens' taxes? Well, that's a great, great question. So if you go to, if you go to the next page, Jeff put together, Jeff put together, I believe it was Jeff or Hocken, his people anyway, they put together what would happen to our taxes if we debentured X amount of dollars, how much would our taxes go up? 20%? 15%? It's all about how much money we have in the bank, how much money gets given to us as to how much the taxes will go up. And then it's the running of this facility. The next question was, what will it pass for this facility cost? And again, you can go to the Duchess community, that's the one we were looking at, and that one was very, very reasonable. They made it very reasonable, like, I think it was like three or four bucks a day for, or $3 a day for the walking track, and $100, yeah, it's part in your, it's part of, yeah. Anyway, very reasonable, and they were super, super busy with theirs. And so we felt like, one might ask, well, in Cardston, we have a lot, we have got two weight gyms that are going on right now. But the problem with them is neither one of them are wheelchair accessible. And after being in crutches for the last two weeks, it really bites not having that anywhere. There are stairs everywhere in this town, and it's annoying. So that's something to think about. We went ahead when we were doing our research and we met with gymnastics, we met with the Windy City Gym, we've met with many of the rec boards in Cardston, and coming up with ideas. Could you use this building? If we had this building, could you do indoor soccer during the winter? What kind of money could get going through here? These are all questions that we've asked. The next question is the best one, councillor Silk. Maybe you can answer this one councillor Silk, and it is, where will this facility be located?
And I think that's one of the main reasons we want to have this open house, well, not the main reason, but one of the reasons is, you know, there's obviously locations that the town has available to us because we own the land. So it could be down by Alliance Park, it could be on the west end of town on land that the town currently owns, it could be on the east end of town, or some other location. But I think it's best if we proceed with the knowledge that the public has had some input into where this should go.
Exactly. Exactly. And to stop the chit-chatting of the other places it could go. Number six, it's what is the timeframe to start construction? Well, I mean, if it was up to councillor Silk or myself, it would be next month. But until that jackpot comes in, it's all about the money. We can't do anything without money. So, I mean, that's quite honestly the answer. What will be in the facility? Well, as you can see, pickleball, volleyball, basketball, walking track, dance studios, weight room, soccer, badminton.
What about wrestling?
Wrestling, of course. Anything you can imagine. Our goal is to fill it because we want it to be busy. It's all about it being busy. Especially in the winter here, in Cardston, we need a place in the winter to go for a walk so we're not slipping and falling, so we can be busy and active all year round. One of my favorite quotes is this, it is from the, it is from the strategic plan, it says, "A thriving, healthy community with recreation facilities that help retain youth and seniors and attracts visitors and new residents. We need to develop an exciting new recreation facility that spurs on economic activity, tourism, and a higher quality of health and life for our residents." Okay, next question. Will a facility like this attract people to our community? Councillor Silk, I'll turn this one to you.
I don't know that we can measure how much it means to the economic development of a town to have a facility like this. I think we recognize that a lot of residents, both old and young, when they want to do something like this, they head off to Lethbridge. And I think if we have basically one more feather in our cap as a community, it helps to draw young family there. I think one of the things that we saw and what we thought about when we saw the Duchess facility is if young moms, for example, could go and have a play place for their kids to, basically, to have a good time for an hour or two while the moms work out or do whatever they want to do, walk, and those sorts of things are an attraction to our town and make it something that's a place where both old and young will want to move and stay. So I think that's just one of the things that we have to consider is the economic development benefits of a facility like this.
Thank you councillor. I would add to that, this fall, I had the privilege of going to Parks and Rec Conference, and they had a speaker, she was a researcher, a medical doctor at the U of C, and she talked about how parks and rec in towns and communities and villages can help with depression and the difference exercise can make. And I feel like in every community, I can only speak of Cardston, but I know that is huge here. And a lot of people struggle with this, and by having healthy living and by giving people the opportunity all year round to get out, and like councillor Silk said, moms coming out, they do it in the summertime, they go for walks with their babies. But in the wintertime, it gets really hard because they're housebound, and being housebound is pretty rough. And we've got seniors that are housebound, we've got young moms, we've got people with disabilities, they need to get out and be active. And by having a rec facility, and she spoke to this, it drops all sorts of things. Diabetes is better, your mental health is better, cancer patients, she talked about that, they did this huge, they did this huge project where patients that had been working out and then diagnosed with cancer, the ones that continued to work out, the higher survival rate was amazing. And so these are all, these are all things we need to look at for our community because we want communities that are happy and healthy. The last question is, what do we need to do to accommodate the seniors? I think that's a huge one. I think councillor Silk and I have already talked about them. It's essentially, and we will get more information when we meet with them on the 16th, but it's my understanding that the seniors are really wanting, the ones that we've talked to are wanting a facility that they can go to and walk, and that they can exercise, and it's flat floors, and it's not uphill and downhill. And people would say, well, we have the Remington Center, but it's not level. And some of them really struggle with that. And it's concrete, so it is really hard on their shins and their legs and their joints because apparently cartilage is a thing that happens the older we get. So, I've heard. So, anyway, these are all, these are all things, don't look at me, these are all things that we're trying to answer in this open house. I guess I, councillor Silk, is there anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, just, I guess a couple of things. My lottery ticket plan, I want that to be understood that I'm buying tickets because if we win it big, then we'll just donate the cash.
Perfect.
That's not a, it's not a good strategic plan, so I don't have much hope in that. And I think the other thing that, I think councillor Brown touched on it briefly, but I do believe that- but I do believe that there is grant funding available, not through the province, but through the federal government. And I think that's where we're gonna have to look to try and, um, focus our attention on getting grant funds. And, uh, I think what we're hoping is that we can raise, whether it's fundraisers or grants or whatever the case may be, a significant portion of the cost of this. So that's, um, I think that's it for now.
I think, I think I speak on, all of us, when I say it is not our intention for this to be a huge financial burden. That's not why we wanna do this. And we wanted, we wanna be smart in doing this, that is our goal. So, in all the research, in everything we've done, we've tried to keep an open mind and see what is best for Cardston. But I guess I will just close with, I think that the vision for Cardston is to be healthy, to have economic growth, to keep the people we have here and, and have Cardston a place that can be all year round. Um, I guess I will throw this back if there's any questions for, for all of us.
Thank you councillor for that thorough presentation. There are some points, obviously, that are, uh, yet to be looked at. And thank you councillor Salk for your input. I sense your passion, I sense your desire for something that will keep community healthy. There's nothing wrong with the concept. Where, uh, the reality hits is a dollar impact. And as you mentioned, uh, we, we need to open it to all for questions. And I'm just there to guide the discussion today. And, uh, I really, I'm sure that there are concerns regarding the financial, which is always what the large project will, uh, bring to the surface. Is how do we, in an true economic reality, that is a provincial reality and a municipal reality also down the line, how do we reconcile large project capital, capital investment with dwindling funding and with, uh, the need to tax? So those are questions that are real questions and we can't avoid them, no matter how much we may like a project or not. And as you say, the appetite is with the taxpayer. And that you will not know until you ask them. And so I appreciate all your work you've done. You've done a lot of work with your, your committee. You brought to the table much information. Uh, there are some questions, I'm sure, that we need to kinda bring to the surface. Councillor Drew.
I just wanna make a comment. I've talked to several, when I say several people, one or two, um, that have expressed some concern about the actual cost and how that's gonna affect their tax dollar, that kinda stuff. And I think it's important for us to have those people at our meeting, but also the people that are in favor, right? So that we have kind of a balance and can see, okay, this group says, no, we don't, you know, I don't have any kids, I don't, I don't wanna have to worry, I don't want my taxes to go up, that kinda thing. And then on the other hand, we have people who are saying...
Yeah. Jeff, do you have a comment?
I just wanna make a couple of quick comments on the financials. So one thing to keep in mind, and Councillor Salk alluded to offsetting the capital, for about every million dollars that could be found in capital, it reduces the operating cost about sixty-five thousand a year. So just, just kind of a number to keep, okay, if we could raise two million, well, then it's not six-ten anymore, it's about a hundred and thirty thousand less than that. So just, just as, as we're thinking, cause we, we did this analysis based on full financing with an aggressive operational budget. So to, to be fair to the process, it is, you know, three full-time staff and, you know, we tried to consider everything, not to exaggerate the number, but to be, not to be surprised after if we were really, really low. So just keep in mind that if there is some funding that can come on the capital side, that reduces that annual, that annual amount by sixty-five thousand a year, roughly. It's not a perfect number, but, but roughly. And then the other thing in conversations with the public, and I put it on my spreadsheet at the beginning, is yes, extra costs have to be funded with extra money, but there's also another side to that, that you can reduce other things if that's the priority of the community, and that's still to be determined.
Yep.
Right? So the one thing that mitigates the concern about the tax increase is the appetite for the facility. And then if it is hi- a higher priority than other things, which we can examine in great detail as the process proceeds. So I just wanted to give a little bit of context to the numbers behind it that we, we put together.
Thank you.
Okay, so the number you put together at this point, the high point was about, between capital and maintenance was about six hundred thousand dollar a year.
Correct.
Around that figure.
That's with a fully financed five million dollars, correct?
Right, and that's over twenty years.
Correct.
So that means that the capital, so five million would be advertised over twenty years at about...
Two and a half, two point four percent, something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
The rest is maintenance that you see as being the cost of running the facility twenty-four seven or whatever, that it's all year long.
And, and there's an important couple of pieces that are appropriate for some debate, frankly, when we, when we entertain these types of facilities. So when we looked at the cost, it was just under three hundred thousand. Um, fifty of that is replacement reserves, so that's included. We didn't, we didn't put the full depreciation of the building in there because that really, as we've talked many times before, to try and tax or recover full depreciation is incredibly onerous on, on anybody for anything. So it has a portion of that because we felt it was important to keep it in because it was consistent with council's planning processes in the rec master plan. So we're currently reserving two hundred and twenty-five thousand a year, two hundred and fifty-five or two hundred and twenty-five, two fifty-five. We'd be proposing that that would go to three oh five with a facility like this, right? Recognizing that that will not recoup the cost at the end of life. It's only fifty thousand a year on five million. It's not gonna last a hundred years. You know, it just won't, but it's something. It's something that's going back towards it, so we tried to be careful there. Um, and we don't have a firm grasp on the programming to say this is exactly what staffing and all that needs to look like. We know conceptually, so we tried to be, um, a little bit liberal there, but careful not to blow the thing out of the water. So there's, there's still a lot to work through here, but it's some guiding numbers at this point.
Okay, so councillor Drew, councillor Bangri, councillor Barnes.
So I guess I, I, I'm really glad that we're having a public meeting. Are we going to do any type of survey, fan out to the community?
To every member?
Yeah, like are we gonna do that? Or are we just having this public meeting? I guess that's my question.
Yep.
Please councillor.
That's a great idea. So Factor Five apparently sent it out to everybody in the community and, and they already answered us back, those ten people, so maybe we'll get...
Three hundred sixty-five.
Yeah, they sent them out twice.
Yeah, but...
Did they send it to everybody? Cause I didn't get any.
On the amount of people we have in Cardston.
Didn't get it, I asked.
But the people that are coming, yes, yes.
But once people, once the rumor mill starts and they find out that my taxes may go up twenty percent.
Right.
I'm thinking that's an opportunity for us to fan out a survey so that those people who are concerned about that can actually have a voice. I don't know, that's just...
So the answer is, can we? Yes, yes, the answer is yes, we can.
Is it worthwhile though?
That is a question.
All right, uh, thank you. I have something regarding that also. Councillor Bangri and councillor Barnes, and then I will, uh, ask my question.
Go ahead, councillor Barnes.
Councillor Barnes?
Um, kudos to you guys. I think this is a great, um, you've done a lot of great research. I, I, and I like what you've done. I'm like everybody else, the tax component is, is worrisome to me. But the fundraising, if we get out there and get, you know, telling people all about this, get them excited about it, I think the funding will come. I mean, personally, I'm prepared to do some, make a donation, um, cause I like the project. I just don't like twenty percent taxes. I'm not prepared for that at all. But I like the project, I think it's a great thing. Whether I have, whether I even use it or not, that's the thing. I, I'm looking at everybody else that could use it, you know, grandkids that will use it. I, 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 I really like the thing, I like the questions, uh, the qu- questions are very appropriate and, and, um, yeah, thanks for all the research. It, it helps me to understand it a lot more. But that's my biggest concern, is the tax part.
Okay, councillor Bangri?
Uh, I appreciate the, the, uh, the presentation, a hundred percent. And I support a recreation facility. However, there's all these questions of finances and money. Uh, I haven't found a money tree in Cardston yet. We have already in place recreation facilities that require yearly maintenance. And if one, one individual rec facility is our, our skating rink, our ice center. What is that gonna cost us in the next five to ten years for operational? We've got, uh, we're relocating, we've got, in the master plan, we've got relocation of the, uh, tennis courts. We've got, uh, a spray park involved. And we've got a swimming pool now with water slides. We've got a playground, uh, it, it all takes maintenance. And the operation, uh, charges of that maintenance will just overwhelm us eventually, you know? And, and I don't know, I, I like the concept. I, I love the concept of a recreation center. But we're talking about, uh, involving tourist information center, which we already have. We're talking about, uh, um, different courts, which we already have. We, you know, uh, I don't know, dance studio and so forth like that. There's, these things are all in place, are we gonna be able to entice them to move into this rec center at a cost?
Councillor Barnes, go ahead.
Did you have anything else?
No.
Can I answer? Um, councillor Salk, don't be afraid to jump in on this, but I, to answer part of that, I would say, the vision that we've talked about is it is our goal to have rentals in there, to have businesses in there so that they're paying rent, so that we're taking that rent and we're paying down our debt with that rent. Now, is it gonna be high enough? Well, we'll see. That's why, now are we moving tennis courts? Well, no, not necessarily. Is it in the rec plan? Yeah, he put it in there, but he also put in doing seniors housing at the golf course and we're not necessarily doing that. So there are things in the rec plan that he had a broad idea of that aren't necessarily a way we wanna go, but we appreciated his intake on that. Councillor Salk, did you wanna add?
Well, the thought that comes to mind too is, at some future time, there may be a reality that hits the town of Cardston and that's, that there are a number of facilities, namely churches, that may be off limits in the future for using them as a, as a pickleball center or whatever the case may be. There may be a day coming when, uh, all those activities will be asked to move. And the question is, where do they move to? If there's no facility to accommodate them, then I guess they dry up and go away. And are we prepared to do what we can to try and make a facility viable? Or do we just let these programs that seem to have a lot of seniors content to them go away? That's a question I don't know.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a few questions and, and just comments and questions. The question to go along with councillor Drew has to do with the, um, survey that needs to be done, in my opinion, to, for the businesses of this town. A lot of the business owners are from the county. Therefore, if even if you were to do a plebiscite question on funding, they would not even access that facility, that plebiscite. So I really honestly feel that there has to be some kinda mechanism to, uh, involve the businesses of the town regarding that facility because in town, they will be the hardest hit tax-wise. And, and speaking to a few of them, they really are concerned about the impact on their taxes. So therefore, I really think all the chamber of commerce need to be at a table, need to be invited formally so that can disseminate the information. But they're going to want to know the impact on their businesses. So that's one. Uh, the other question I have is maybe regarding one of the idea that is in a Factor Five, uh, document, which was to look at a clubhouse acting as a community rec center kind of. So I don't really know where that idea has gone because you're presenting something totally different, so I don't really know.
I'll answer that.
Please go ahead.
Um, so, so like I said, when Factor Five came up with their game plan, their strategic plan, they came up with a bunch of ideas. And then as the ad hoc committee and the rec board, we took those ideas and created what we felt was best for our community. Factor Five really wanted us, because they were trying to kill two birds with one stone. They were trying to give us a golf course house, like a building for us, and a clubhouse, thank you, and, and a rec center all in one. And so he wa- he went out there and he thought it would be great for us to go ahead and build the rec center out there, but then we realized we don't have, there's not enough land out there to build it. Factor Five also wanted us to put seniors housing in part of this rec center and underground parking and, 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 and. And the ball was looking pretty fantastic, but it was scaring the tar out of some of us. Randy's, I'm sure, shaking his head, as I'm sure councillor Salk is. These, these are all great, but again, we weren't thinking a hundred million dollars. We were thinking just a little less. And so we were trying to come up with, again, something, we took their information and then we tried to tone it for Cardston, cause we didn't feel like a hundred million dollars was reasonable.
All right, so you answer that question, thank you.
Councillor Salk, did you have anything, or Randy, anything?
In other words, you paid a, a good money for something that was not very useful.
I, I, I wouldn't say that because as Jeff told us in the beginning, this is something that needs to be done.
Yeah.
When we're applying for grants, when we're applying for all of this.
You have to do a study.
You have to do it.
Yeah.
So now we've bought and paid for it, we have it, so now that's one step that's already been done.
All right.
Tail it down to where it needs.
Yeah. Councillor Salk, did you have anything?
No.
Okay.
Okay, there, there is another question I may have, uh, regarding the fund, funding. It appears that the way it's presented, the town is going solo, meaning that there is no conversation with the county as per the ICF, uh, to kinda bring them there in a past without consulting them, that never have wanted to give us a cent. And it has been, uh, my understanding from here on that if we have any kinda project like that where we would like their input, that they want to be consulted and advised of the project. So where is that consultation with the county?
So as part of our advertising, the county, the Blood Tribe, the reserve, they're all being invited to this open house to come and see what we're thinking about. It's like, in the last meeting, the Rotarians were upset that they weren't consulted about the moving of the camp kitchen down at Lyons Park, sorry, the Lions Club. Well, we're just in the baby stages as they were there. That's why we haven't called them to the table. Have we talked to members of council from the county? Of course we have. Yes, go ahead, Randy. Yeah, he does.
Is he reporting to his council?
Yes, he is, Kerry.
They, they actually gave us a little bit of money for this strategic planning.
They gave us...
Okay. We haven't also gone to them and proposed anything because they're so hurting.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. Well, which is complicated. Okay, all right, so that's good.
Councillor Quinton sits at the table, so whether he's reporting, I would think he gets the minutes, just like the rest of us, to submit them. And with the Factor Five, I believe they gave five thousand dollars or ish to go towards it, was my understanding. So they too felt the need for this community because they... So they too felt the need for this community because they too were hearing from people, so.
Good. And so my last comment will be to Counselor Baum. Counselor Baum, you were talking about 20% on your tax. You really are concerned with that. You were saying if you were able to raise the money for the capital, you would help with that and support that cause. The problem is a little bit deeper than that. And I think the taxpayer needs to understand that because there is one cost that you cannot take away, it's a maintenance cost. And the maintenance cost represent about 10% of that 20%. And so I really hope that the taxpayer understand that, that no matter what, that's a 10% increase in taxes, no matter what. So, that's a comment. So, any more question, comment, Counselor?
I haven't said much, but.
Counselor Quok, I'm happy you.
Maybe it's a whole attitude we need to address. We're so used to getting things for free like our state centers and everything else. Not that I want to be compared to our neighbors to the east, but they've got, they've got facilities now that are legacy facilities. They're there for the next 40 years, 50 years. We can sit back and, I won't say penny pitch because we're not, but we do have to be careful with our funds. But if we, if we just sit back and take care of roads and sewers, and that's all we ever worry about, where are we, where are we going down the road? I've got two kids I didn't think would ever move back to Carson. Now we've got seven grandkids here. What's going to be down the road for them to do here, 20 years down the road and 30 years down the road? I know where I'll be 30 years down the road. I mean, six, we're down there, but, but that's my, bit of my concern is, yes, we have to worry about the dollars.
You have to.
We also have to look at the future.
And there is wisdom in what you're saying. But you have to do what the taxpayer is capable of giving and then a point where they cannot give. So that's where we have to figure, where is that point? Go ahead.
In closing, I believe that it is our goal for the residents of Cardston to step up and tell us the direction they want this to go.
Totally right.
If they do not show up and they do not speak and tell us what they want, we cannot give it to them. So I guess my plea to anybody watching this would be, where are you on March 25th? We need you here.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-fifth. We need you here because we need you listening and talking to us. Twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth, also known as the 26th. We need you here. We need you here on the 26th.
No, I have it as a 25th.
Because we need you to, to let us know the direction. Because it is pointless for us to do all this work if we do not have the support of this community. Counselor Self, in closing, did you want to add anything?
I guess if we continue to do what we've always done, then we'll always get what we've always got. So I'm trying to say that we're trying to do something a little bit different. And if we don't, if the citizens of the town of Cardston, if that's the decision they want to make is that they, they want to stay, remain status quo, then that's what we'll do. We'll honor their wishes.
Thank you. The taxpayer is always a king of the matter, isn't it?
Jeff, have we ever done a, a survey of population age?
Yes.
Like the categories of age?
Yes.
If you look at the.
It's in our statistics.
If you look at the statistics, the only thing that is not, is not quite complete. You can go online and get it.
Yeah, so this would have probably come from the StatsCan profile. So we didn't do age demographics in our municipal census?
Right.
Oh, we did do age demographics. I'm going to take all that back. We were, had so much foresight, we did age demographics. But StatsCan does them whenever they do theirs as well, so.
What you will get on Stats Canada that is not shown there is by slices of ages, the dollar amount of income that they have.
Right, income.
And that will allow you to see the percentage of people that are on fixed income. And that actually is an opener in our town.
Yes.
And when you start to look at the average income in our town, you will see that it is, in comparison with a province, we lower than a province. Which, those stats are interesting because people never want to admit they're not making as much money as. Counselor Self, I think you have a grandfather duty. And so we are so troubled that that brings you to tears. Take care. Thank you. We'll call you back later.
I think it's important to also.
Still there, Counselor Self?
I think it's also important to say that the people that we have sitting on the ad hoc committee, we have town residents, we have county residents, we have, we have. Who? Oh, yeah, business owners from the town of Cardston. We have counselors from the county, counselors from the town. We have a diverse, oh, we have Westwind School Division. So when, when these people show up, it's a full house and we have many different opinions, definitely. But they all brought us to this stage. I guess I just wanted to say a special thank you to Randy and Jeff and their staff for helping us compile all of this because we couldn't have done it without them, so thank you.
And Counselor, thank you for the many, many hours of hard work you put together for that presentation. Much appreciated. I honestly give you my compliments.
Thank you.
All right, so on another topic, let's go to 7B, donation request. That is the Alzheimer's Society. Jeff, you may want to express the reason why this. Thank you, Randy. Thank you. For this, normally you have discretion up to $200. Here they're requesting 300. Maybe you want to explain a little bit what causes the increase in that donation?
Yeah, so I'll give the moral. I support the support of this donation request because we've sort of caused the additional money. So this group normally uses our camp kitchen in the area down at Lyons Park. And because of the potential of construction down there, they're going to host it and, and host it from here in front of the museum and the civic center so they can use the washrooms and whatnot here. And so they've asked if they could use our tent for the day because they can't use it, potentially can't use a gazebo. So to take the risk out of it, I said we'd be happy to set a tent up for them and then they could start the event here. But it put their costs over the $200 threshold that I have. But it's all in kind, they're not looking for any cash. And so I put it to council for a resolution.
Counselor Bangree?
I'll make a resolution that we do the in-kind donation to the Alzheimer's Society.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you so much. Okay, so the next one was Tanya Thorne. And to determine the discussion of, discussion topics, I think we probably will have more idea after the budget. There is a budget in two days, so I'm wondering if we should maybe wait another week and then bring it back. But I really feel that, one of the question that I have is, why is it that we get a feeling that AUMA is showing maybe a more political side of themselves? If they could explain that to us? And is that intentional? Or is that the nature of the beast because the government may be past and present and not building bridges sufficiently for communication? So I need to understand what is the knee-jerking way of doing business at this point? So if, that could be one of the requests. And also, the other question that I have, for example, for the policing, whole issue of it. AUMA took it, took it upon themselves to represent the voice of.
Everybody.
The municipality without consulting with each municipality as to the impact. They took it as upon themselves that the AUMA vote was sufficient to give them their power. And yet we send them a letter explaining to them that it was a risky proposition to pretend that it represented all of our voices. And now they're realizing that and it's not going very well. So I'd like to know that. Is there anything else you would like? Okay, so at least those two points, yes, Jeff?
I, related to that, Mayor, I think I sent you an email that AUMA is doing a budget debrief on Friday, too.
Yeah, I'd like to.
So I've registered. If anyone wants to come, we could throw it up here. If there's two or three, we can throw it in my office.
What time is that?
Two o'clock.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering, are you going to?
And do, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, we can put it up here and watch it here. Or like I said, I got a big monitor in my office, too. But I did, they only took limited registration, so I grabbed one of them.
Well, I'm, I'm glad you did.
And then we can watch that. Now, just also of interest in this discussion with policing, it'll be in the news tonight and tomorrow. But Fort McLeod just let go both their peace officers in order to fund their rural policing initiative. And so they've decided that, they'd done today, as of today, they no longer have a peace officer program.
So that is my concern regarding that very issue. The whole model of financing, in my opinion, is so miserably flawed that it's going to cause more distress to municipalities in a sense that what we there to do is protect the citizens and now we're cutting down exactly where those people are to protect the towns. It bothers me.
I don't know if AUMA has any influence on this as well, but a lot of things are bothering me right now with the, the government just doing away with contracts without, just, we have a contract, no, you don't anymore, it's gone. All those things are starting to bother me and I wonder if AUMA, we could be under threat with our doctors, with our nurses, everybody that we're going after.
I'm going to tell you, that was one question that was discussed at the Edmonton mayors and CIO meeting. And there was a recommendation made generally for AUMA. You could see the letters that was written there regarding those discussions.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what we're talking to Mr. Scow about, but that might be something we might want to discuss with.
Yeah, like I say, AUMA has done.
Not tonight, Counselor, but we certainly could talk.
Yeah, yeah. Now, there's quite a few items that need to be brought to the forefront, no doubt. And I can tell you that another one is mayors and reeves have taken also the liberty of writing the minister. Okay, so under the Canai Transition Center Society Letter of Support, as you can see, there is a desire for the Canai Transition Center to access grants from the government. And in order to do so, they want to know that the surrounding communities are there in support when there is placement and possibility of transitioning in places, in towns for different workers. So we just need a resolution to.
Well, we, we've used the Canai Transition Center in the past. We're going to use them again.
Yeah.
So I'd make a motion that we write that letter of support.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. So the business arising from the delegation, so this is an interesting story. Because it's, what comes first, is it chicken or the egg, or the egg or the chicken? So it appears to me that we need a little bit more information, first of all, as to how many lines exist. But as I, as to my comment earlier, if the town was the one who created those lines and put them to their houses, I would say, fairness would say, the town should take the responsibility. I don't know how you feel about it.
I agree.
Well, no, I'm not disagreeing with you, Counselor. But a couple of points for consideration. I raised my hand at an inopportune time there, but.
That's right.
Two things that Bart and I have discussed to consider. One thing we want to be careful of is that we recognize that water with no lead, but particularly less lead, is better and safer. And we don't want to make those who can economically afford to change things out be the ones to benefit from greater health. That seems like an unjust situation. That, that the replacement of those lines becomes contingent on whether you can afford to pay for them. So that, that's something we're looking to avoid. But at the same time, the town's position on utility ownership and utility maintenance has been fairly clear over the last number of years. And we had this debate with frozen water lines a couple of years ago. So we had a lot of debate around this issue of, at what point does the delineation of ownership change? What we don't know is, yes, we're only going to do a small sample this year, but what if we find a high percentage of them have problems? And we're looking at thousands of dollars per property. I don't suspect we will, but what if we do? And so I understand, Mayor, it's a chicken and egg situation because if we think we're only going to see three of them in the whole community, it's not that difficult to say we'll replace them. But what if there's 30?
You're exactly right. Is, where is our, our town responsibility? And where is the capacity of the town to absorb it? Another, another way is the way Bart proposed, and I think is probably one of the, maybe the fairest way because what happened 40 years ago, good grief, we don't know. But I think the change in rate in utilities to recoup the infrastructure, not any difference at what we do today when we have to replace infrastructure. That is maybe one way to look at it.
So if I could touch on that, that's an interesting one because if we were to forecast, well, we know what the testing costs will be because that's a pretty easy equation. And by the way, it's a little more than just 25 because of the shipping and all that stuff with it, too, right? So it could roughly be 40 or 50 dollars a home once you ship the samples. But whatever it is, easy calculation, no problem. We, we don't know, although we could extrapolate based on the sampling, what the overall town could be, and then put those costs when we do our next utility rate analysis. And is it reasonable to spread that over every utility user? That's the question that you would have to ask because there's a political implication there, right? So that's for you to debate, whether that's equitable or is it more, is it more fair to say that it's your home, it's your line, we'll help you by spreading that cost over, heck, five years? Monthly, so 60 months, for example, for this. Is that reasonable? Is that prohibitive? Because we don't want people to avoid making the repair for, because they simply can't afford to make the repair.
I mean, all that is based on so many if.
Yep, it sure is.
And so is, the best scenario is to or decide now that the town was responsible for putting those lines, the town is responsible for the infrastructure replacement. That's one way, which is kind of factored in. Or we as a council decide we will help the owners with a certain amount of reduction in, in their utility bill or whatever it might be. I don't really know which could be the financial way of doing it. It's difficult to say you're going to get a rebate on your taxes. I don't really think that that's palatable and even allowable.
Yeah, I'm not sure we could do.
But I think maybe a grant or some kind of something.
It could be a per-home subsidy.
A home subsidy, whatever we, we want to call it. At the end of the day, it's still come back from the general funding of taxes.
Yeah.
Jeff, help me understand this because I'm dumb as heck with this presentation.
No, you're not.
Now, we can put a filter. Apparently, we can have a company come in and install a point-of-entry filter system. And I understand from sources that that would cost about $300 to $500.
Bart was saying between $100 and $200 and something dollars for.
Okay, so what happens if we did that instead of changing the supply lines?
Right.
From, from the stop to the, to the property, that'd be a lot cheaper. That'd be a lot cheaper by, by accessing, you know, these filters in a bulk commodity and then, and having the homeowner pay for the installation of them like we did with the water users, the downgrade showerheads and stuff like that. It would be a lot cheaper for our town to do that. And then, but what happens after that point-of-entry filter? Because my house is all copper.
Yep, so you've got solder, lead solder in the place, and yep.
Yeah, and so I would have to look after that situation. But the, but the point-of-entry is what I'm talking about from the cost to the town from bringing it from the curb stop into the, into the property.
But essentially, if you want a filter just before the tub, or, oh yeah, I see what you're saying.
One of the challenges with that is that the regulatory bodies see that as a stopgap only.
Yeah.
But that the goal is to remove the lead pipes. That's the goal. And not to, not to treat it indefinitely.
Well, because that was my question.
Right, exactly.
Why not put the mixture in the water so we can stop talking about this?
Exactly.
And he said, we cannot do that. We have to remove the pipes.
Yeah, you have, you have to deal with the issue, not, not do a Band-Aid.
So one thing, as I'm just sitting here and maybe, I'm understanding a little bit of your challenges of, and, and, and again, it's preliminary and I don't know a lot about it either. But what if we, what if we decided to do a more aggressive testing to kind of understand six months from now what we were actually dealing with? Before we were making decisions on the kind of capital that we were waiving?
What is what I think?
That's what I was thinking. What if we tried to do, I hate to say, but what, because I don't know. But what if we tried to get 500 homes done by the end of the year? And at least we had a good sampling that we could extrapolate and say, hey, in 500 we found one.
Yeah.
Or in 500 we found 10.
Yeah.
We would use the older houses, that's what I'd go with.
Well, and Bart does want to start with the older homes because that's where your higher probability is going to be, right? In those older homes. So I think the, the obligation on us right now is to commence testing.
Start with mine. I have some old houses.
Yeah.
I have three old houses.
Do, do mine.
Well, again, we'll, we'd go through them in some kind of systematic way we can monitor and, and keep track. But maybe what we need is just simply better data.
Well, that's what I think. I think then we will know how big the egg is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Geoff, you can put my name down that I would volunteer my services after I get my knees done. You know, that I would go around and take the samples too. And it'd be at no cost.
Well, like I said, Bart, I think, I think we'd get good uptake if we said to the community, come to the town office, pick up the container, here's the process, bring it back.
Sure, yep.
I, I think you could have a couple hundred in a couple of days.
I agree.
You know, pretty simple, because I'd want to know that.
Absolutely.
That's important for me to know, right?
Exactly.
So should I talk with Bart about what, how aggressive on sampling could we be within the calendar year? Not just 20, because I know he said 20 and 20 and then 1,220, right? In the last year.
Yeah.
Geoff, Geoff, can I suggest a few things? There, there is, the seniors, for example, many of them are, are in older homes. They come, there are about 120 of them that come. Let's say it represents 60 folks, a 60 household. It's already 60 household if they were to bring 60 bottle right there. That could be distributed, labeled and brought back. That would be already one way. There is another thing, you have public meetings. You know, there are different places where we could-
Give you back your public meeting.
Well, that's what I was just going to say.
Right.
They have 180 people show up, he said, to their luncheon. Well, out of 180, okay, we've got couples in there, but still, that's probably 80 houses. Like bam, here's a water bottle, bring it on back.
What is what I-
They're already coming out.
Yeah, except some are from the council, so you have to eliminate them. Councillor Drew?
No, I was just going to ask that same question. I just, and to make, for us to make a decision, we don't have to make a decision right away as to how we're going to do this.
We know we have to test.
We have to test. If our correspondent simply says, here's the program, and once we have an idea of the severity or lack thereof of the program, we word it appropriately, then council will determine how they can work with the households to-
Agreed.
For infrastructure change, but that'll be determined once we understand-
I think that will be the, the wisest approach, really, because the chicken is big.
If there's any issues with that when I talk to Bart, I'll bring it back to CCW.
Okay.
But we'll look and see how aggressive we could do a sampling within this year, within 2021.
Thank you so much.
And we'll have to amend a little budget at mill rate time for, you know, if we want to do 500, well then, we've got to have some pretty good money in there to take care of it. Okay.
All right, thank you so much. All right, under eight committee and other reports, there are many committees. There is, any questions you may have?
AGM for the historical societies tomorrow. They're always looking for new members, so 7 o'clock tomorrow, if you can make it there.
I'll be there. I have no choice.
Yeah, unfortunately, tomorrow is, tomorrow is one thing, I might be able to do. Okay, 8B CAO report. So you can see we've been busy with Geoff at that meeting when we went away. And things are moving. We shall talk to you later, hopefully next month. We should have a better idea where we're going there. Okay, 8C, peace officer report. You can see the dogs are still a issue. It's absolutely amazing. I always wonder, are there the same dogs that are being trapped and released and trapped and released? Well, there must be because I see ma-
Keep coming back.
Many, many that seem to be happy wandering in town still. So our peace officer is busy, quite busy, as you can see. Under nine questions, no questions. Okay, so let's move on. 10, 10A is stars, is a thank you letter. 10B, custom rotaries and invitation to the, something like the AGM kind of. And it's a, it's a roast beef?
Charter night.
Charter night, yes, same kind of idea.
Yep.
Is that, if I can?
Go ahead.
Is that something a member of council should go to?
It's voluntary.
I know it is, but should it be? Would it be good for us to have a member of council go to it?
If you would like to represent that.
I'm just throwing that out, I just-
I, I never really have counted on council to be there.
Which one is that, the?
The Rotarians.
I think they're like us there at the Rotarian fundraiser dinner. That is always the dinner. That one is more for people who are new inductees to the Rotarian.
This one you're saying is?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is their birthday party.
But I mean, if you want to go there, you're more than welcome. It's not an official invitation.
Okay.
Just listen to Kim talk.
10C, South Grove Regional Economic Development. You could see there are many studies there that are done regarding the broadband. And Geoff, that brings me back to a communication that you had regarding that special issue that councillor Silk and then the Carston Clinic, there were those different plans. Where are we with all that?
So I think this is something, I, I got it from South Grove, so I put it in correspondence, but it'll be coming back when we talk more about fiber.
Okay.
So we just need to, Taylor Warwick was one of the groups that's, were hoping, give us another proposal on what it would look like to develop out our system. And then waiting, well, we'll work with ONET to see if they'll amend theirs as well. So I haven't done a lot of it since we talked. I've had a brief conversation with Ron and, and that's about it at this point.
All right, well, thank, thank you. I just wanted to know where we were with all those talks. The Carston County, it's the land use bylaw notification. They're having about six different open houses. And I really hope that this open house on the land use will go well for them because last time it was not very pretty. So I really hope that the citizens will appreciate what has been done and that they will ratify it.
So, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Everybody's got this in the mail from the town and I've had all kinds of people say, why do we get this? This is Cardston County, what's it got to do with the town?
Well, last-
We have no say in their land use bylaws or anything like that, right?
Because when you do a mail drop, everyone gets one.
Okay.
And, and in town, there are people who own property in a county too.
Well, I guess I do, don't I?
And so that brings me to the end of the public portion of, of meeting. So we need to have a motion to move in closed chambers.
Why don't you recess? We have some food.
Oh, you do?
And it's 6:30, 6:40.
Oh, okay, I did not know that, so.
I'll move to recess for 15 minutes?
15 minutes, okay. So all in favor? Thank you very much and thank you to the media. We covered a lot of ground today, Crum, and it's still early.